Carrie, do you want to just explain the format of what you have said to me on the phone? That we, can I ask permission from councillors to possibly have more than 15 minutes? Because we have three external speakers to explain the situation with Friendship House with us. I'm very grateful to them all for coming. And I'd quite like to introduce them, but Carrie, I think we have to vote on that, don't we?
Yes, you do need to get permission from all councillors.
So could I have permission from Hatfield Town councillors to possibly have slightly more than 15 minutes? I don't want it to be much more, but it's just so that you have a full explanation of what is happening before we vote. I don't really want anybody in any doubt as to what the purpose of this motion is. And it really is to do with saving Friendship House for Hatfield services. And I will just explain, quite a lot has happened in the last two weeks, which is good news, but not a done deal yet. So, thank you very much. But do you want us to vote about giving the extra 15 minutes? Or can we, can we just indicate with your thumbs up sign on the reactions, please?
Reaction will be good enough.
Can you give us a reaction with a thumbs up if you've got it? You've got it on your screen?
Yeah.
I think that's a majority. Great. Okay, so let me just explain. We've got Glynn Hayes here, who is the Borough Councillor, who's been involved in calling a cabinet decision in on behalf of Friendship House. We've got Sarah Wren, who is, is it Sarah or Sarah? Which way do you like? Sarah. Sarah Wren, is it? Okay, Sarah Wren, who's the Chief Executive Officer of Harts Independent Living Service. Who, that is the good news that's come forward, I think it's the last two weeks actually, who are able to take over the lease, but I'll try and explain. And I've got Steve Russell here, who is the last remaining trustee of Hatfield and District Age Concern, who have run Friendship House for the last 50 years. So the order of speakers is going to be Glynn first. And I hope that it won't take very long. For less than five minutes. And then Steve, who will give a bit of history about Friendship House and the current situation. And then I would, Sarah has got a presentation she wants to show us, I believe. Is that the case, Sarah? Sarah, right, okay. So without further ado, I would really like Glynn, would you mind just in summary, explaining to us what the current situation with Wellan Hatfield Borough Council is?
Yes, thank you. On the 9th of February, Cabinet passed a decision to surrender the lease, in essence, for the lease to be given back to them so they could make some decisions and review some options about what they wanted to do with Friendship House. I, on the back of not a lot of information being given, put that decision in, which means it just comes back into the council system and the overview and scrutiny committee, which I'm part of, get to review that decision and then make recommendations off the back of it. Upon reviewing it and looking at the recommendations that the Cabinet had passed, decided that actually, I think it was best, we thought, as a group, as the OSC group, that it was best if we recommended back to Cabinet that they seek to look for options of transferring the lease first. So that was agreed in OSC. That was then sent back to Cabinet, they've met today. They put it into a Part Two meeting, which is a meeting which is held without help behind closed doors, for instance, because it would involve money perhaps, I don't know. I don't honestly know the reasons why, because it was a Part One meeting, which has been changed to a Part Two at last minute. So it's been held behind closed doors. They've also come to a decision, but again, I don't know what that is because it's been held behind closed doors. So I'd expect the detail to follow on that later in this week. Thank you. Margaret, you're muted. I can see you talking, but you're muted.
You have to be good at lip reading. Sorry about that. Yeah, so just to explain, that's partly why my motion has been amended, beside it being slightly technically not quite right. So later I will explain that. But thank you very much, Glynn, for explaining some of what's happened in February. Steve, I think it would be really helpful for you to explain how Friendship House got built. And what you, well, we want to just say thank you. This is my opportunity to say thank you so much for everything you've done in the last 50 years in providing services to the elderly in Hatfield. It's been a really, really difficult year for you, I know. But I would love to express gratitude to all the other trustees, but I know some of them have died, which is a bit hard. So over to you, Steve. This is Steve Russell, who is, I think, the last remaining trustee and Chair of Hatfield and District Age Concern. Is that correct?
It is indeed, Margaret. Yes, yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Just a bit, perhaps a bit of history first. Friendship House was conceived as an idea by Mrs Doris Beresford-Johnson back in the 1960s. She was at the time President of the Hatfield and District Welfare Committee. And they ran a lunching club at the Memorial Hall. There were in fact at the time, a number of lunching clubs in the Hatfield area. And all these were affiliated to what was the Old People's Welfare Council. And it was felt at the time that there was a need for a specific premises in Hatfield to provide regular meals and a place to socialise in. So really, under Mrs Beresford's leadership, in 1970, they arranged or they organised a lease from what was then the Commission for New Towns. And raised in the borough the funds to actually build the first Friendship House. As I said, the lease was, or the pre-hold was originally owned by the Commission for New Towns. I believe it was transferred to Hatfield Rural District Council in about 1969, 1970. And then it subsequently became part of Wellan Hatfield Borough Council. In 1997, a lottery grant fund was obtained to build a games room at the rear of the premises. And as this required additional land, the lease was modified to include this additional area and extended to 2098 at the continuing rent of £130 per annum. The lease is held by Hatfield District Age Concern. And this is a charity that was set up back in the 1960s. And it was set up to promote the relief of elderly people and in particular provision and operation of a day centre for the elderly. I am currently the only trustee now of the charity. Sadly, we've lost in the last couple of years to our key trustees. One of whom was Mick Clark, who was a former mayor and leader of Hatfield Town Council.
Yes.
Throughout the last 50 years, Friendship House has been operated as a leisure centre for the elderly. And the main purpose is to promote their health and wellbeing, to provide social contacts, services and activities to assist them. And it's really designed to help them to remain to live independently in their own homes. It also enables respite breaks for carers and a meeting place for support groups. We've had groups like the Alzheimer's Group and some dementia groups there as well. Originally, it was about a third of its present size. And over the years, we've had a number of extensions. So currently, there are now two main lounge rooms. There is a large dining room. We've got a large kitchen, three offices and a conservatory and all the support facilities as well, toilets, et cetera. The centre was open five days a week. And we provided tables served cooked meals. This is mainly because of the user group we had. Many of them were old and infirm and needed wheelchairs and that, and they were unable to serve themselves. We had services, we had hairdressing there, we had chirrupity coming in, a benefited by service. And there were weekly meetings of things like exercise groups, bowls, clubs, and a regular meeting place for the elderly support groups. I think on average, we are providing something of the order between, back in 2020, about 80 to 100 cooked meals a week. And we had probably between 150 and 200 regular users of the centre. The building, in my view, is in a good state of repair. It's ready to reopen. We had a major commercial clean during 2020. The property does have a flat roof. And this on occasion has required some remedial work. The last significant roof repair we did was back in 2015, when we spent about £10,000 on just repairing some bits where the filter cracked. Centre, we manage the centre, we have a management committee, which is made up of a number of unpaid volunteers, together with the employed centre manager. When the centre was started, in practice, it was run on a volunteer basis by the users, many of whom at that time were newly retired and active 60 or 70 year olds. But as the years have progressed, our age group has got steadily older. And now I think the average age is well into the 80s. And the majority have some disability of some sort. So that they are reliant, or have been reliant on the council bus service to get them to and from the centre. In addition, because of things like food hygiene and health and safety regulations, it's made it very difficult for volunteers to actually run the services at the centre. And we've had to over time employ more and more suitably qualified staff. So that at the beginning of 2020, we had some six employed staff at the centre, a manager, an assistant manager, three cooks in the kitchen and a cleaner. As a result of the COVID pandemic pandemic, we were required to close our doors in March 2020. And as, I mean, originally, we had anticipated this to be in some period of six months. And with the continuing grant that we had at the time from Harts County Council, we had sufficient funds to see us through to the autumn. We had a kitchen staff on further leave, but we still had our manager and assistant manager in the office. And they were maintaining daily contact with our users to see whether there's any support or information that they could provide remotely. In October, when the pandemic closure was seen now to extend for at least another six months, it was clear that our finances were insufficient to see us through. And particularly as we had quite a large redundancy exposure, which obviously would be a liability of the centre if in fact we had to close. So in fact, the decision was taken that we had no choice at that time but to close permanently. And our last staff member was made redundant with effect from 31st of December. Since October, we've been looking really at the best way to try and preserve the centre for the benefit of the people of Hatfield. And I think that's what has led to this meeting or discussion today. So I hope that gives us a fair coverage of what's happened over the last few years.
Can I just ask you one question, Steve, right at this minute, before other councillors later ask questions? Would you mind reading the restrictive clause in the lease?
Just to...
We could do it later if you prefer after...
Can I dig it? Yes, I haven't actually got that immediately in front of me, but I'll dig it out. Yes.
Yeah. So just to explain, this is why I've had to slightly change my amendment. The lease has a restrictive clause which requires the building to be used for services of the elderly. So although we've had some other interested community services that you may have known about, potential kids and Banner Food Bank who wanted to use it, they could not fulfil that clause. But the good news is that Harts Independent Living Service can. And I'm going to hand over to Sarah and let her have the floor. Because this is, I hope, I hope it will be a good news story. We just want Wellan Hatfield Borough Council to do the right thing now. We would want them very much to transfer. It's called reassigning the lease to a different charity that can run Friendship House and include services to the elderly particularly, but particularly, yeah, that fulfils that restrictive clause. Sarah, would you like to speak? And then we'll, anybody that has questions will address questions afterwards to any one of the three. Well, Glynn has got to go, so. I, is, if there's, should I just allow people to ask you a question, Glynn? Would that be an idea if you?
You can do, Margaret. If anyone's got questions, I'm more than willing to answer them.
Have any, particularly of the councillors got any questions about what Glynn said? No, it looks like not. So I think we'll just...
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Mary. Yes, yes, Lyn.
I think Tristian has as well. This behind, behind closed doors meeting, Glynn, tonight, when will the information be coming, that meeting?
Good question, and it's one that I can't provide you with. I'll hope to try and find out myself tomorrow. But when the, when the decision will be published, it's usually two to three days. They have a cabinet decisions notice that goes around, and that's when it will be made public.
Thank you.
I think Peter's got a question as well, Margaret.
I can't say, oh, Peter, yeah.
Thank you. Glynn, you said that the discussion was in Part Two. I watched the cabinet meeting at five o'clock and it was all discussed in Part One. Today.
So, do you know the answer, Peter?
That's not what I saw in five o'clock. It went into Part Two and then the meeting concluded. So that's exactly how I watched it today.
Friendship House was just, it was eight F, I think it was, on the agenda. And basically, it was agreed that they will still look at the options before assigning anybody the lease. They'll look at all the options, but all the, all the options will include a community centre. So there's not going to be any building of just flats or anything like that. Every option will include a community centre.
Okay, so they're not looking to transfer the lease, they're just going to go straight for surrendering the lease, which...
Surrendering the lease and looking at the options.
Yeah, which means there's no, yeah, so there's no transfer of the lease, Margaret, just so you understand.
Yeah, so they're not looking at all the options then, are they?
Well, yes, they're looking at all the options because what we want to do is to see how many other people, how many other charities, et cetera, would be interested in taking on the lease.
Yeah, in a new building.
No, that, that decision has not been made.
I think, Peter, I think we better just park this because I think there may have to be a legal advice on this, because I've been told that the leaseholder who has not surrendered the lease is allowed to reassign the lease if there is a suitable other charity.
With, with the consent of the Borough Council.
And do you, and I'm told that most solicitors say it would be unreasonable to withhold that consent.
Well, I haven't taken any legal advice on that.
So that, my motion is about, is to persuade the Borough Council to allow the reassignment of the lease to Harts Independent. But you'll hear that later.
Yeah, but what the councillor is saying, what the Borough Councillor is saying is that rather than it just be transferred to a, another single charity, they want to know who else is interested in it and also looking at all the options of what could be done with the space or the land, the building. But every option includes...
Then becomes, anyway, that, that becomes a bit more of a tricky legal matter then. But I'm going to park it at that point because I think we should hear from Sarah and what her proposal is. So if there aren't any other questions...
Councillor Wiltshire.
Yep, so I, Trist, councillor Wiltshire.
Just ignorance question, just purely, OCS Group, sorry.
OVERVIEW and Scrutiny Committee.
Of?
OSC of Wellan Hatfield Borough Council.
And what did they do?
They scrutinised decisions.
Sorry, I'm just clarifying. I don't know. I don't know what cabinet is and I don't know what the...
Tristan, so the Wellan Hatfield Borough Council runs a cabinet system. So cabinet make decisions and some of them get referred to full council, for the councillors to make a decision on.
Okay.
And don't. There's a scrutiny committee, overview and scrutiny committee, which is set up. And our job is to scrutinise decisions that the cabinet make. So there's the option to call it in, which means if they make a decision, we necessarily, it's not that we don't agree with, but if we want to have a closer look at it, we call that decision in, if you have a closer look at it, and then we recommend back to them with either nothing. So we say that's all, that's all okay. Or we might recommend back to them and say, actually, can you have a look at this, please? And see if that's, you know, if that's of any use. Cabinet don't have to take our advice, as they haven't obviously done tonight. And then they can carry on. So that's, that's the job of the overview and scrutiny committee.
No, no, cheers, Tristian. Thanks. No worries.
Thank you, Glynn. I think probably, just so that you hear a little bit of it, Glynn, I think we should move on to Sarah. Is there anyone else who has a question first? Because we can, we can ask questions at the end. But Carrie, have you got Sarah's presentation? I think she wants to speak to a presentation as well. Is that correct, Sarah?
Sarah's a co-host, yes, but I'm going to try and share my screen. So it's really, really lovely to see you all. Thank you so much for allowing me an opportunity to talk to you. I'm going to do the technical bit. Let's hope that it works. There we are. And so I'd just like to very quickly talk to you about the organisation that I feel very privileged to lead, Hertfordshire Independent Living Service, and why we are really excited about the possibility perhaps of having the assignment of the lease for Friendship House. That's one of our lovely clients there. And that statement, helping older and vulnerable people stay happy, healthy and independent at home, is what we're all about. That is our whole purpose. So what do we do? Well, we were actually established back in 2007. And we are actually a charitable social enterprise. So that means that we exist to try and do good in our community. We've won lots of awards and I think that that's testament to the effort that we make to really, to do our work, you know, with real care. We've got four sites at the moment, Letchworth St Albans, Hemel and Ware. We're quite large now, 270 staff and about 50 volunteers. And we also employ people who have barriers to employment. So we feel it's really important that we give everyone a chance. And wherever we can, we try to support people to have work with us. We operate 365 days a year now and we are across the whole of Hertfordshire. And for that, for that large area, we're supporting about 15,000 people each year. Now, the services that we provide, you'll see, are actually sort of very, very closely aligned to the work of Friendship House. So we have meal services, that is, meals and wheels and other teas and breakfasts that we take into people's homes. But also lunch clubs, emergency grocery food packs, very similar to a feed bank on Wheels. And we provide meal cover for other environments where people need help. If people don't need a meal, but they still need a visit, we have a pop-in where we can go in and we can give someone a medication prompt to make sure they're okay and do some small jobs for them. We also provide a lot of services in the community. Many of them are focused around dementia and we run fun clubs where individuals living with dementia can, can come away and spend time with us to give their loved ones and their carers a break. But we also run community hubs where individuals with dementia can come with their loved ones. We provide advocacy, we install key safes and other equipment. And then we also provide health and wellbeing services. So this is a real focus for us to try and improve people's health. So we run a really intensive exercise programme, taking exercise into people's homes. And interestingly enough, that's been running hybrid options. It's amazing how we've got people in their 90s and 100s online and being able to use tech, technology during the COVID crisis. And we also provide dietetics and nutrition support, training, audition checks and so forth. So, what else do we do? Well, we do have experience of running a community hub. And the photograph there is of our clients having fun at the hub that we run at the moment in St Albans called the Jubilee Centre. And there we run lots of clubs and activities and events. We partner with lots of other charities. We have our own lunching club, dementia fun club and so forth. But we think it's important to work far beyond that. And we have really great relationships with schools. We do regular initiatives with schools across Hertfordshire, other local businesses and community groups. And we also try and support smaller charities. We are aware that we're one of the larger organisations in Hertfordshire. So we offer advice and guidance and business support and work together to try and make sure that every charity is able to thrive and serve the particular group that they are set up to support. The other thing I'd say is that we are all about evidence. So everything we do, we try and collect evidence to be able to prove that we really are having impact. And I hope that for the Borough Council, that will be a really important thing. Because of course, they have their targets around improving the health and wellbeing of local residents in Wellan and Hatfields. Now, when we measure our impact, we do it in a whole variety of different ways. But we also do a big annual survey and we usually get over 600 responses to it. The slides are around, so you can read this later. But basically, it just shows the sort of impact that we're able to have. People actually saying that because of support, they visit their GP less, that they do feel better nourished, that they're less lonely and that they're more independent. All things that I know Friendship House is really keen to do. Sorry, just go back on there. So this is just a couple of photographs of our dementia club, also running at our Jubilee Centre hub. On the left there, you can see our clients before COVID, doing some dance and activity. I think they were at the time having a good laugh. And on the right, you see what we've had to do post-COVID. So we have been able to reopen services. We closed down again for a short period over the sort of last new, new variant of COVID because we were quite concerned about it. But we have found ways to make our space safe so that people can come out and meet again. And that has been hugely important. So what's potentially our vision for the wonderful Friendship House? Well, we're still finding out about Friendship House, but we would love to be able to help and support here. And these are just some of the ideas that we'd like to share. I mean, obviously, we'd like to build on the amazing work that Age Concern has done previously for over 50 years. You know, fantastic impact that's been had. But also, we're really keen to work with other charities. And across Hertfordshire, you know, we believe partnership is really, really key to trying to make people's lives better. We'd love to use it in the way that we do at the Jubilee Centre as a real community hub, lots of activities and events so that people can sort of come in all around, obviously with lunch clubs and home delivered meals and home based support for those who can't get to the centre. And I think initially, because of COVID, there's going to be a lot of building of confidence again and building your strength so that individuals do feel confident to come back to the centre. Likewise, with our active ageing, exercise support and dementia clubs, all of those things we would love to go on. And lots of intergenerational activities too and community outreach. I mentioned Wellan and Hatfield Borough Council. And I really hope that if they decide that they will consider this assignment of lease, that they'd be interested in using this as a physical health and wellbeing hub. Of course, they have their own healthy hub, which is virtual, which really isn't appropriate for everyone within the community. So it'd be wonderful to have a hub where individuals can actually come to have that advice and support. And of course, because we are a food business and do lots of meals and wheels, the dietetics and nutrition support that goes alongside that. So that is just a few sort of ideas there that I had. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And very happy to take any questions.
Close if I could.
I'm muted. Thank you very much, Sarah. So I think possibly to just focus our minds, it might be helpful if I read out the motion that this was all about. Would that be helpful next?
I think Sarah asked us questions, Margaret, and I was going to ask her a question.
Yes, no, I want you to ask questions, but actually, what we can do to help is largely to do with persuading Wellan Hatfield Borough Council what is possible between Steve, who holds the lease, and being able to reassign it to Sarah in Hills. But it does actually need the permission of Wellan Hatfield Borough Council for him to do that. And it sounds like they may not be giving permission, so they may need some persuasion. Yeah, so anybody else got questions for Sarah then?
Yes, please. Well, you go first, Lenny.
Lenny, how do you stand up first? Yeah.
You go, Peter, first.
Okay, no, I was just going to ask whether or not, Sarah, you've been in touch with Wellan Hatfield Borough Council to put any proposals to them.
Thank you. Yes, I emailed them today on the back of Steve having contacted them. Because obviously, this is his lease and so it's sort of effectively a private matter between him and the council. And so it's sort of effectively a private matter between him and the council. So I've basically emailed some opening information and have told them that we can present them with a detailed proposal or go and talk to them and have discussions if they would like us to. So I hope that I've opened discussions to them.
So if you've emailed them today, before today, have they had any notice of what your plans or your hopeful plans were?
Yes, not from me.
I think, to be fair, Peter, Steve emailed yesterday of an outline naming Hart's Independent Living Service. So they did get it yesterday. I've seen Tony Kingsbury's reply. Saying he would try to take it to Cabinet, but I suspect they need to see more detail to be confident as to the financial viability and that they would not have a liability themselves if Hills took it over.
Sarah, my moral observations and questions really. Thank you very much for that presentation. That was really good and really exciting, I think, moving forward. A question maybe to Steve. I wondered what you thought about Sarah's proposals. They seem to take what you've been doing to the next level, which again is very exciting.
I think from my point of view, it is a very attractive idea. It enables Friendship House to continue to provide the services it has in the past. And I think it would be the best result for Friendship House. It was, I mean, we only really became aware of it over the last couple of weeks. We've tried to move quite quickly to progress it. But for me, it would be the best solution for Friendship House.
Yeah. Me personally, I think we've got a moral obligation as Hatfield Town councillors to give every possible backing we can to the proposals that are now put before us. It's a community asset that needs to be saved. It's a community asset for the lease at the present is quite de-chronian. And it needs updating, and it needs to be more inclusive than what it is at present. And I think Sarah's organisation are certainly the people to push this forward and make it happen. And this place can't be demolished and built on with the promise of maybe a community centre being built underneath it. It needs to be left as it is, and it needs to function as it is, but better than it is at present. And I certainly will be doing everything I possibly can to help move this forward.
Thank you, Lenny. Anybody else with questions? And I was just going to say, what did seem to sort of join both your talks together? Yeah, okay, Karen, if you want to ask a question, please do.
Well, it's more of a observation and a comment actually. But obviously, I am a little bit disappointed that, Margaret, you have had a picture taken with a red rosette standing next to Friendship House. This is not meant to be a political thing. This is for the good of Hatfield and the residents and the people. So I just wanted to make that very clear. First of all, this is not meant to be a political exercise. Sarah, first of all, I think it was a wonderful presentation. I don't know why you didn't go to the borough sooner. It kind of ticks all the boxes. Yeah, it's lovely.
I'll just tell you, she didn't know about it earlier. And I don't want this to be a particularly political exercise, Karen. I actually do want the whole of Hatfield Town Council supporting the proposal.
But I'm just amazed, Margaret.
It did take quite a bit of side work.
Not political. This is about the good of the people.
When you say that.
Political thing.
You say that, but Glenn has just pointed out that it's not quite clear what the outcome of the cabinet is yet. So I will just say that legally, I do believe that Steve could reassign the lease. And it doesn't need to have a tendering like other, you know, if the lease was taken back entirely from Steve Russell, then it would need a tendering. But actually, because it's Steve Russell who could actually reassign the lease at this moment, and it would save a lot of time, and it would mean the building wasn't standing empty, it actually is a very good solution at this moment. Anyway, has anybody else got some questions? Steve, Steve, yes. Steve, would you like to just come back?
Can I make a comment about the lease? At the moment, we are the lesssee. And Glenn mentioned that they were taking it back. They can't take it back until we surrender it. And so until they reach agreement with us as a charity, we will continue to be the lesssee. The clause about assignment, my solicitors advised me, is although it says that we cannot assign the lease without the permission of Wellingham Hatfield Borough Council, they have said this is a very archaic clause in terms of how it's drafted. And that the current thinking is that if we came forward with a reasonable proposal to assign it, it would be difficult for them to refuse the assignment. But technically, they do have the right to refuse. And therefore, we do need their permission, whether it's given sort of voluntarily or ultimately, I suppose, potentially, if we were to make a legal issue of it.
Do you want to, have you got the restrictive clause handy?
I've got the restrictive clause here. The restrictive clause says to use the premises as and for the purpose of a welfare centre and club for providing meals and recreational, cultural and therapeutic activities and medical services for elderly persons and for no other purpose whatsoever, except with the previous consenting writing of the landlord. There's a bit further about sort of other sort of supplementary uses, but that is the key clause. I've been told that that clause is actually quite solid. And therefore, there isn't an opportunity to change that without permission. And there will be no obligation on the council to change that clause. The assignment clause says not to assign, unlet or part with the possession of the premises except for the purpose of investing in a trustee or body corporate established for the purpose. And that is the clause my solicitor has said, that he feels that if we came forward with a reasonable proposal to assign, then the council would have difficulty objecting to it.
Thank you, Steve. Peter, would you, guess you have another question?
Yes, thank you, Margaret. With what Steve has just said, and thank you for that clarification, Steve, with regards to the clause. With regards to what Steve's just said, and the fact that communication regarding Hills was only first made to the Borough Council yesterday with a follow-up email from Sarah today. Is this meeting not rather jumping the gun? In that communication should be with the Borough Council between Hills and the current trustee? So that a decision can be made? Because from what I can see, Hatfield Town Council has no financial or other interest, a social interest, but no financial or other interest in the building. And therefore, this is a use, Carrie might be able to clarify, that as a a use of Hatfield Town Council's money and staff to basically do labour electioneering for them. In the photograph, Margaret, the photograph of you was with two other councillors and a young child, all wearing red rosettes, saying Friendship House. Friendship House isn't actually going anywhere. So at the moment, so one is rather jumping the gun. But secondly, it is just blatant political electioneering. And that's not what Friendship House is about. And that's what nobody is, where nobody wants to take the argument to Friendship House. And you know, I mean, you can criticise the council, the Borough Council for wanting to examine the options. But, you know, why is Hatfield Town Council staff being, you know, being employed to further this?
Because we believe in democracy. This is not to do with, it's not to do with money. It's to do with representing the residents of Hatfield. And Hatfield now, Wellingham Hatfield Borough Council cut the grant to Friendship House in April 2020, which is partly how they couldn't exist now. And we just want them to do the right thing now. At the moment, you know, we do have a country where it matters, that we can vote and we can express the wishes of our residents. So this is, this is not to do with money. It's not to do with Hatfield actually having any material interest in gaining money from it. It's purely democracy to try to get the right thing for Hatfield.
No, it's Labour Party electioneering. It's just part, it's just part of the campaign, and the Hatfield Town Council is paying for it. But don't get me wrong. I mean, what Sarah said about what Hills can do and everything, I think is absolutely fantastic. And yes, it was a good presentation.
Okay, that's a question. Sorry. Can I have Jackie's question, please?
I'm horrified by the photograph, to be quite honest. If it is, this is a Hatfield Town Council proposal, and it's a Hatfield Town Council discussion, then why weren't Hatfield Town Council invited to the photo opportunity to promote this event and to promote Friendship House?
You can, you can have your photo taken next week.
No, sorry. That photograph is already in the paper with you and your red rosettes. Why weren't we invited to that? It could have been a multi-party, multi-party photograph opportunity.
There's an election coming, Jackie, that's why.
Well, that's why I'm horrified.
I will just say, I'm horrified at you putting the neighbourhood plan politically, when the neighbourhood plan has to be neutral. And you shouldn't have put your neck on the bottom. It had to be carried on the bottom. Talk about that later. So I'm sorry, that is a point of order. And we will talk about that later. If there are any other questions, I do think it is very, very helpful to have Sarah here for any questions. Yep, John?
Not so much a question, but just to share your disappointment that some of the other councillors here seem to be trying to politicise this meeting. But the reason why I think it's not premature, and I think it's entirely correct to have this meeting now, is as councillor Brandon said earlier, he was absolutely spot on, we do not want to see a loss of a service to the people of Hatfield. And we have every right to speak up on that. Service proposal was excellent and actually really exciting for how we can expand that. But it seems to me that any other proposal at the moment could keep some of the services at the moment, but could actually take some of them away. This one will keep what's there and actually build on it. And it's absolutely right for us to back this from the very start and sort of throw our weight behind it. And entirely appropriate for this to happen now, and entirely appropriate to happen in this way. It's just disappointing that some don't see it this way.
Thank you, John. And it is true, we are a slightly different entity than Wellingham Hatfield Borough Council. We are allowed to have our own opinion about what is good for Hatfield. And it is time that Hatfield wasn't the Cinderella end of Wellingham Hatfield Borough Council. So it's a really good opportunity, actually.
And councillor Wiltshire is waiting to speak.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand. Councillor Wiltshire.
Yeah, no, it, I'm just, I'm following everything. And I'm just still trying to understand what the outcome was from this afternoon's cabinet meeting, if it was in part two, and whether that detriments what you're asking, Margaret. It sounds like it's.
No, the way that, so let me, I think, you know, it might be helpful if I wrote my amended motion, because the motion does need amending. And I did ask Carrie how to do this, and she just said the best thing is to read it out now in the meeting. But you will see that everything I've put in the motion that we're voting on doesn't harm any negotiation that will go on between Steve and Tony Kingsbury in the cabinet and with Sarah. It is simply that we have knowledge of it, and we would like them to urge to grant permission for the reassignment of the lease. Now, I will just say, time as well is of essence, because April 1st is coming fast towards us. And, you know, to be fair, Steve Russell has done an amazing job in just holding things together at the moment, given everything that's happened to their charity. And it's quite sad what's happened. But it's actually very good news that there is an alternative charity that has the same aims and objectives, in fact, to independently live in their own homes, I remember Steve saying, is exactly what Sarah's organisation stands for. And so I just think it's amazing at this time that it is, you know, you know, a gift to be able to let Friendship House have a new lease of life. And that is all that that is about. And, you know, I just think we should give that opportunity. We have the opportunity as town councillors to support Friendship House in that way democratically, to say this is what we really want for the people of Hatfield. Now, Wellingham Hatfield Borough Council may not have quite the same priorities, you know, and I just think it really matters we do put our vote for the people of Hatfield now. Has anybody else got any other questions, particularly for Sarah or Steve? Karen?
You're muted, Karen?
You're muted.
Steve, can I just clarify that the actual, now, I know quite a lot about leases, and I think Rod can back me up on this. But who owns the actual land that the building sits on?
The land is, well, the freeholder is Wellingham Hatfield Borough Council. So they are, they own the land, and we have a lease from them to use the land or to use the building on the land for the next, well, up until, I think, 2098. So probably about a 70 or 80 odd years left on the lease. But effectively, we have exclusive use of the building and the land on which it stands, with a little car park at the side that's also part of it. But the freeholder is Wellingham Hatfield Borough Council.
I think it's just a shame that between Sarah, Rod, all the other charities that wanted to get involved in Friendship House, actually hadn't gone to the borough. Because they really are very flexible. And between all of you, you know, you could have really moved mountains. And so, yeah, so I just hope that you get what you want.
Can I just, on that, on that comment, just that when I first went to the Borough Council about it and where we were, their reaction was, was that they would require the lease to be surrendered. And that they would then advertise it for outwards, but they would also reissue the lease as a full market lease. So that any charity then taking it on would be then paying a full market rent and not the peppercorn that we pay at the moment of £130. So whilst they were offering it, they were making it difficult for charities, in fact, to take on the building.
Yes, I don't, the straitjacket you put charities in by charging a full market lease, as you say, and it, which is for the land, it's not for the building really. Because the building was built and owned by effectively Hatfield and District Age Concern. But, yeah, it's, that is another tricky legal issue, I think, isn't it, Steve, as to who really owns the building at this moment?
I think if we surrender the lease, then the building would actually go to the council. They would own the building as well. We would actually have to relinquish the building as part of surrendering the lease. Because we would have a building and no land on which to put it. So in practice, it would go, it would go to the Wellingham Hatfield Borough Council, and they would own, therefore, from that point forward, both the land and the building.
But they don't own the building at the moment?
Not while.
Not at the moment, no.
Not while Hatfield and District.
Not whilst we have the lease, yeah.
Have the, yes. Jackie, yes, question?
For Steve, how much of the problems for your charity have arisen, not simply, but because of COVID? Had this not happened, would you now be in the same situation? Were things already beginning to change, let's say, at the end of 2019? That's made this even worse, if you like?
We historically have always had trouble raising funds for the centre. And it's always been a struggle, and year on year, it has been a bit hand to mouth. As it happens, at the end of 19, a business As it happens, at the end of 19, a business contact of mine made quite a substantial donation to the charity, which actually put us in a stronger position at the end of 19 than we'd have been for some time. But with Covid and the fact that literally our income sources dried up, it was only, I mean, it kept us going for that six to nine months. But we were now looking at another six to nine months and there wasn't any income to support the expenditure. And the centre costs about £10,000 a year to run in terms of premises costs. And then on top, we had the six staff members. So even with the furlough scheme, we had a wage bill of between £10,000 and £15,000 a year. So we just got to the point where the funding ran out.
Okay, that makes sense. And a question for Sarah. Based on what you've seen of the building, I assume you've visited the building and had a look. Are the kitchens, there seems to be quite a lot of cooking involved in what you're doing. Are the kitchens up to the standard you need? Or to take over the building, would you have to invest in new equipment or updating anything?
Well, obviously, with any building, you have to constantly invest in it to sort of make it as good as it can be. So we would assume that we would have to make some investment to, you know, really make it as good as it could be for, for local residents and for other charities to use as well. But it's a great building. I mean, it's got such a lovely feel to it. It's, you can just sense that it's being used for good. And, and we would be very happy as an organisation. I mean, our board met, had an emergency board meeting last week and the reason we haven't done this quicker is because we just didn't know that Friendship House was, was there and an opportunity for us to, to sort of help. But we had an emergency board meeting last week and the board said that they're really, really keen. Obviously, we've still got to do our sort of final proposals, but they feel very excited about it. And we've also had a board member sort of visit the property with us, which Steve can kindly arrange for us. So, yes, definitely, there would be investment to be had, but it's so closely aligned to our charitable purposes. It is, it is, as far as our board are concerned, an appropriate use of our charitable money to make sure that it can serve more people in, in the Hatfields area.
Excellent, it sounds like a really good project.
Thank you, Jackie. I, that is getting it on the table really in time. Shall I read the motion or is that awkward? Sorry, Richard, have you got a question?
No, I just said, please read the motion.
Okay, so the motion reworded from what Carrie sent around a bit earlier. It's similar, but it's not quite the same. And I'll read it. That this council agrees to write to Welling Hatfield Borough Council to ask that Welling Hatfield Borough Council grant permission for the lease at Friendship House to be reassigned from Hatfield and District Age Concern to Hart's Independent Living Service to enable essential community services still to operate from Friendship House in Hatfield, particularly for the elderly in the future.
Seconda, please.
Could I have a seconda for that?
I'll second that, yeah. Yeah.
Yep, thank you. Can you use Richard? And Linda and John and Lenny, I think. And then we were going to vote on it. I will just say that previously I have said we are prepared to do a petition, but I am awaiting whether the cabinet might do the right thing this week. And if the cabinet do the right thing, there wouldn't be need for the petition. But, so the petition, we will start if they do the wrong thing. But I, I have to say that, that could be, I need to just ask, do you know how long a petition runs for, Carrie? Do you know how long the Welling Hatfield Borough Council?
I think it would be best to address that to one of the borough councillors.
Yeah, Karen or or Lenny, actually. Do you know how long a petition is allowed to run for? In this case, we really would like something before April the first, but.
Councillor Juggins would like to speak.
Oh, yes, Karen.
Can I just do an amend motion as well, Carrie? Is that okay?
It is, but you can tell us what your amendment would be.
Prose an amendment, yes. Can I make an amend motion that this was, this is to be reported if it's going to go into the local paper from a cross-party position? I think that, I think that's a much better idea than just single units because this really is for the good of the community, it's not to do with politics.
Can I just say that in the first sentence then, because only Carrie has got a copy of the amendment at the moment? I do agree to that. And I think we would agree to that, that we just say that the council representing all parties agrees to write to Welling Hatfield Borough Council to ask, and the rest the same. Is that all right, Karen? So that it's.
Could you just clarify what you just heard?
Shall I read it again with the extra bit that you've just added? So this council representing all parties, or you could say cross-parties if you prefer, a cross-party agreement agrees to write to Welling Hatfield Borough Council to ask that Welling Hatfield Borough Council grant permission for the lease at Friendship House to be reassigned from Hatfield and District Age Concern to Hart's Independent Living Service to enable essential community services still to operate from Friendship House in Hatfield, particularly for the elderly in the future.
Yeah, and I think that the town council should make their own report on this as well, again, from across party. I think that should be part of the motion as well. It should come from Hatfield Town Council.
It is coming from Hatfield Town Council, that's why it's a motion, that's what a motion is. You know, I wouldn't need to bring it to the council if it wasn't cross-party. We are wanting.
I'd like the cross-party in there. Yeah, we will do a press release as well.
Okeydoke. I just wanted to clarify one more thing that is in the lease, which is that if Hart's Independent Living Service got this reassignment, within the lease itself, it also does allow them to let the building be used by other charities, which would mean that the other charities that we originally were trying to help, like potential kids and Manor Food Bank could still use the premises. Is that correct, Sarah? Sarah, would you like to just speak to that?
Yes, thank you, yes, that's certainly our understanding. And I think it's absolutely vital that all facilities are used as widely as they can be for the community. So if, if we needed to sort of get any extra support from the Borough Council on that, I'd be very happy to do so, but I believe that it's been used in that way before. And certainly, I think that would be wonderful and I'm very, very keen for that.
Great, and Steve, do you agree with that? I know you know the lease backwards.
Yes, I mean, I think it talks about the letting for supporting the charity itself. So I think it has to be presented in that way, is part of the funding of the centre to help the charity provide the services. But we are allowed and we have let parts of the building with various activities, even as a polling station and that sort of thing. So it has been used to raise rental funds to support the charity.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I think, can we vote on the motion now? And Carrie, did you, are you happy with the wording that we just changed the first sentence to? So this council representing all parties.
Yes, I've got that.
Agrees to write to Welling Hatfield Borough Council. And you've got the thing, you've got the rest, haven't you, in writing?
You said you emailed it to me.
Okay, would, would, can we vote using our reactions button or whatever you've got? Putting your hand up, please, that motion. You want to put your hand up for the, thank you, Lenny. Karen, are you not voting?
No, my hand's gone up.
Can't see it. Put your hand up in the air on the screen if it's not, if your electronic hand isn't working. Oh, well done, yes, okay, so that's one, two, I think that's unanimous, isn't it? Yep, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you very much. If anybody's got any more questions, we've actually, we've done it in an hour, I think, just. But thank you very, very much, Sarah, for coming and for Steve for explaining the history. I just feel that Friendship House deserved us all as councillors really knowing.
Not political.
Pardon? Sorry, I didn't hear what somebody said. I think at this point, there is one other thing that I need to raise, which I just mentioned earlier, which is a point of order. But other than that, it is really for just the councillors rather than.
Councillor Peterson, if it's not on the agenda, I'm afraid it cannot be discussed.
It can, from this, from reading the standing orders, if it's a point of order, you can raise it.
What sort of point of order is it, please?
It's to do with helping, well, knowing what, what we do with the neighbourhood plan and the fact that it's neutral.
I'm sorry, that's not a point of order.
Well, it is in that, I, please, would you explain why I believe your name should have been the name in the paper?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, that's still not a point of order, there's still no agenda writing for that.
Can you just correct us factually then if I'm wrong? But I do believe it's meant to be neutral and it matters that it's neutral.
I'm sorry, it's not on the agenda, this cannot be discussed tonight.
Okay, well, with your help, I think I should write a letter to Jackie then, all right? Thank you. I've actually said it anyway, so, but I have taken advice about it and I believe that is correct.